We're on air, we're live. It's 6:29, I'm calling the regular meeting of the Arts Commission to order. It's October 22nd. We have a big agenda and some new faces here tonight. So I'm gonna go ahead and get right into our agenda. Number two on the agenda is receive public comments. We received an email. This was sent on Tuesday, October 22nd. It's from Mark Graham to Alex Hamby. From Mark Graham, 410, South Santa Fe Trail, Duncanville, Texas. "I recently watched the video of the October 7th Duncanville City Council special meeting. Frankly, I was shocked and confused by what the video showed during how hot funds were being doled out. I believe there were three agencies wanting funds, yet without any paperwork, or little frankly, that was not really addressed very well. File for the events they just wanted funds for. From what I saw, it seemed that these groups have long been catered to and funded with little oversight or follow-up and accountability. If I am wrong about that, I offer my apologies." The Arts Commission will also be using hot funds. And my question is, how will that be handled, especially if there are maybe conflicts with board members wanting funds for their projects? I'll refer back to the October 7th special session because it certainly seems that the groups wanting money had in the past been getting funding without much accountability. There was no paperwork at all offered for the groups on October 7th. Am I wrong about that? It was as if the special session could be called, money asked for, a few comments made by council, and then funding given to the concerned parties. Is that how this has worked here in the past? "I support the arts and hope the arts group can flourish while bringing different artists and different groups to the city." Again, I stress "different." To do this, being transparent is a must. Accountability has to be part of this effort. Thank you, Mark Graham. I don't have anything left as far as public comments. Number three. So I want to pause for a second. For those of us who got here 24 months ago, we're in the last stretch. We're in the very last 12 months. We very rarely have an opportunity to catch our breath and recognize what has done, what's transpired in the last 24 months. Through the hard work of this commission, through pop-ups, through mixers, through advocacy, through our personal connections, the Arts Commission now has through policy, permanent funding through one source. It's exceptional. Everyone, well done. So we're looking at the next 12 months. So we're the newest commission in town, and we have not had any kind of transition from old to new. So I wanted to be able to have an open conversation before we start voting for the new chair and the new vice chair. It's always been very important to me that I communicated everyone this Arts Commission. As the first chair of the Arts Commission, I recognize I run the risk of the Arts Commission smelling like me. And it's always been a concern to me about that. And then I got to know every single one of you, and there's not one shrinking violet in the crowd. But we don't know what's gonna happen at the end of the next 12 months. Anyone, all of us who are who are terminal in the next 12 months, we can reapply, and the city council can do what the city council does to determine. But we don't know what will happen. So my recommendation is we have an open discussion about how we want to see that transition. I have my thoughts, but I want to hear from everybody today before we start voting on what happens at the next 12 months when most of us vacate our roles here as Arts Commissioners. So with that, we're missing two members today. Tiffany and Sarah told us before they're not gonna be able to make it tonight, so it's just gonna be us. So I'm going to start, if it's okay with you. I'd like to hear from everybody because this is important. I'm gonna start with Mac, move all the way around, and come back to me.
Okay, so I think we've built a lot of momentum, and we're growing and striving for this cultural district. And so I think we're... It would be important to keep Ron as chair just because he's got the relationships built, he's got the know, the knowledge of the cultural district process and things like that, so that's...
Amy, thanks, Ben.
Likewise, the second one, Mac.
Dr. Perry.
Are we just limiting our comments to this election, considering?
So I want to know what your thoughts are on what transition, because you and I and most of us are gonna be vacating in 12 months. The Arts Commission's never had a transition. So when we vacate, there's gonna be a new election of commissioners or new appointments for commissioners from the city council. So I think it behooves us to set up the new commission for success. So I want to know how you see that transition. And then we'll go and vote for chair and vice chair.
I think keeping really good records of what we've done is important and somehow getting them reflected into the minutes. Because a lot of our activities, you know, we don't necessarily come back and report on all the details. But I think it's important to document that which we have achieved or that which we've done and to build upon it. But I agree, I mean, the leadership has been strong and it seems good to continue.
Mary Ann.
Well, I think you used the wrong sense.
I'm senseless, Mary Ann.
No, the sense I'm talking about, it's a little pun, sorry. I think what you have though is vision, and I think that's what we need to have for another year.
Well, I thought we... So if I understand your question, how do we transition in 12 months to the... You know, what can we leave for them? Good records are part of that. We've spent the first two years trying to find our way, trying to figure out what this is and how to work with the city and the offices of the city. And I think we're starting to get glimpses and glanings. Also, you know, we've started, we put in motion some things that will carry into the future, like the cultural district, you know, things like that. There's no guarantee about continuity in the future with this commission. So if the policies are clear about what the responsibility is for the commission, I think that's strong. That would be important. That's all I can think of.
Thanks, Tim.
I think continuity, continuity is important. I think we've done a good job thus far. If you're gonna chair, the vice chair knows what's doing. You've relayed that to everybody, so we, none of us have ever been in the dark about anything. So anybody, any one of us could step up and continue that. I think it's only three, four, four people who will continue definitely in the next year after the majority of us come off. And if we get selected again, then that's fine, but if we don't, that's fine too. But I do think for continuity, maybe one of those four individuals should be in at least the co-chair position. Not the chair position, so that that would help the next group coming through.
So that you kind of, that was a suggestion I was thinking about. And this, and well, so here's, so here's the thing. And, and, and I haven't talked to Tim about this, so it's gonna surprise him. I wonder how you feel if, if I carry on as chair, but we use one of our new commissioners as vice chair. That vice chair can, can go to the meetings, can do everything. We're preparing the vice chair. So when us old fogies filter off, then there's going to that continuity. So one of the newer groups is gonna have theoretically, gonna be able to slip into that chairmanship and is gonna be completely ready to go. And, and more than that, we've talked about relationships with the cities and partnerships. So that vice chair, whereas Tim and I haven't done much of this, I think it'll be important that the vice chair go to the meetings I go to, talk to the people that I talk to, have conversations with funding organizations, have the stakeholder things. So in that 12 months, if city council doesn't reappoint anyone, if we don't, there's gonna be someone ready to go into the chairmanship with those, with those partnerships in place. Thoughts? I want to look at you, Tim, first.
Well, you've been such a good chairman, and you've been to almost every single meeting, except one, I think, where actually I had to step up and do something.
Was that when I was on a cruise ship?
Yeah.
I was on it for the first part.
If you could've, you would've assumed, yeah, I know you would've. But, no, I'm fine with that. I wasn't, I, I think it's, it makes a lot of sense to, to think about that. Guess I... I, yeah, I wasn't gonna vote for myself, by the way.
So let, so let me ask, so let me ask you this. And this is based on, we have three really good, we have Mac, we have Amy, we have Mary Ann. Mary Ann and Amy have a lot of other things that they're involved in as well. I don't think they're gonna disagree with me. I would like for us to consider, and we've talked about this, I'd like for us to consider perhaps Mac as vice chair, and so much that he goes to all the city council meetings. He reads the budget, he reads the policy generally. I, before I even open up a budget or a policy, he's read it first. And, and, and he's a poet. So I wonder your, I wonder your thoughts if, and then we can talk about this when we go through the vote, if, if we could consider Mac as vice chair? And then if, if Mac is willing, then he can just go to the things I'm going to, build the relationships I'm building? And so at the end of 12 months, we have a built-in chair. Should we need a built-in chair? What are your thoughts on that?
He brought cookies.
He brought the cookie, last time he brought a statue.
Always brings statues.
I think it's, I think it's a good idea, although I think when it comes to voting for chair and vice chair, it really doesn't matter, it's the will of the body and whoever, however is nominated and accepted and et cetera. I think discussion's nice, if there was any discussion before, before the voter officer positions, but I, it's, in a way, it's sort of influencing us.
Oh, that wasn't my intention.
But that's related.
I'm starting across. I appreciate that.
That's why it's coming across, but that's okay. But I think that it's good, because even if he's the vice chair, we have no control over what happens next year. He still may not be elected as the chair, but he still has that knowledge base that he can continue. That's just my thought.
I appreciate your point.
And we thought that Angela would be a good candidate because of her knowledge of parliamentarianism.
She is exemplar.
But again...
Yeah, I have to reapply for the board. I have to reapply.
I know.
Okay, so your point's actually very, very valid, I appreciate that. Mine is more of a context, we're setting precedent for transition, and so I see your point. So I'm gonna go, unless there's more discussion, I'll move off from item three and move on to item four. Election for the commission chair. I would entertain a motion and a vote.
I move to nominate Ron Topsoe as continuing chair of the Arts Commission.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, raise your hand.
Back up.
Sorry.
You don't have to see if anybody else wants to be nominated.
Would anyone else like to be nominated?
Oh, yeah.
By the way, this is, this is the reason Angela is generally always right here. Always. Because I do, I do lean here and then I lean there.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who wanted to? Now, we have a motion with a second. If further discussion, vote, you can raise your right hand if you would. So item five, election of the commission vice chair.
I wanted to put into nomination, Mac for vice chair.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. Nomination.
Is there a... Do we entertain a motion or a second?
What is your motion?
Because, you know, it was a nomination, it's not a motion.
Nominating Mac for vice chair for this year?
Is there a second?
Yeah, you don't have to be a second for nominations, you're just accepting nominations.
Okay.
And if he accepts it, then that's fine, ask anybody else if they want it.
Would you accept it?
I'd accept it.
Thank you, Angela. You can nominate.
Then you can close on the nomination.
Okay, there are no more nominations?
I.
All in favor of Mac as vice chair? Sound time?
Yeah. Congratulations.
And thank you, Tim. Tim has, Tim and I have bonded over the past 24 years. Months, months. I appreciate Tim immensely. Okay, we're gonna move on to item six, the Arts Commissioner to consider the, the commission to consider the following minutes. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? Anne, you wrote a letter, you were asking, and I would like, if you'd like to talk about it, are there any clarifications about how things are minuteed? And I know that you had an exchange with Alex. Would you like to discuss that exchange with Alex?
Well, on the one subject of the collab, I noticed that in the meeting, in the general meetings we had, that we did not agree to do that partnership with the collab. And yet, the committee that was created from our general meeting worked out the details, and we did in fact have a great partnership with the collab. And in fact, we were acknowledged by Monty. We were introduced, Ron spoke at the event, and Ron and Tim worked considerable hours on the photo competition that we had. So none of this is in the minutes. It's not necessarily Alex's fault, I'm not saying, I'm not accusing Alex of anything, you know, but it's just that we're not necessarily getting the reports of all our doings documented, including what we spend, what we do, what we, you know, any results, what we might suggest for another like event and so forth. And it could be details like, you know, how much we spend at the grocery store, or, you know, like with the mixers, I think it would be helpful to have a report after each one, just so that we know, you know, who printed these signs? There's some things that we just don't have records of. So my suggestion is somehow that we work on...
And that's gonna be an item for the next meeting. So I've reached out to Tiffany Wyatt, asked her to bring all of that, so we can definitely get that all documented, cut up.
One of the things I was recommended an email from is if there's something that's being discussed that you want to make sure is on the record, make, recognize that to Alex, let him know that you want it on the record. So generally, when he's minoting our minutes, it's ostensibly action items. And so, like again, so it's gonna be very basic. But if there's anything that you think that deserves to be in the record, be sure to let them know.
It's rather literally the minutes of what we spend here and what happens in this time. And anything else would be added to document, like you're gonna do next session.
I mean, so, yeah, so understand that when he's doing this, he's just gonna, he's just gonna minet our actions. Who's here, what was discussed, what was actioned. So if there's something like Anne's talking about, if she wants there to be more detail, and if she would just make note of it, I'd like this on record.
Or ask that certain people give reports so that they could be documented, you know, like on the collab or whatever.
Thanks, Anne.
I'd suggest that maybe if they give reports, if they've written reports and it becomes part of the record. That way, that way he doesn't have to try and figure out if they have written a report and they submit it, it just becomes part of the record.
Perhaps if we came up with some sort of post-event form, just documented what we spent, what we spent on, not a lengthy report, not like the hot funds post-event report, but something that simply stated, you know, what the date was, what the event was, overview of what we, what we spent, what we did. I know at the theater, we keep a folder on every show, going back to March of 1988, so that you can pull that anytime and know what we did. And I keep a little, I have a, I just, a sheet like this where I write down, we spent this much on props and this much on every show, so we can pull that. And I don't know if there's some way that we could just archive that information. I understand minutes are, minutes are cold and brutal and they're supposed to be, they're just action items. But I understand what you're saying as far as keeper of the knowledge. We want to have the same kind of event next year, well, what did we do last year? And perhaps pictures are part of that. That's the other thing we do is we take, you know, if we have a reception, we take pictures of all the tables, so we know what we did. And that becomes part of that folder, that documentation. And so perhaps coming up with something like that where we could archive it. Now, I don't know where we keep that, I don't know if there's an empty file cabinet, just a drawer someplace, but there would need to be someplace where that knowledge is, where that information is kept. But I think that's what you're wanting, and I think it's a very good idea. I think it's a separate thing necessarily from minutes. Even if they give a report, it's not gonna give us all of that information that you're really wanting archived. And so perhaps if we were to come up with some sort of formula to do that and see if there's a place where we can archive that information would be good.
Right now, the community engagement board has been working on a post-event document. I've been filling it out, because nobody can fill it out. But what's not added to that is the pictures. And I'm sure that we could just, just make that regular protocol. Toby Lackey, he's a, he's a data scientist, and so he's the one who's pulling that together.
Can we just take it all in and say, come back down?
Absolutely, I can create a digital form.
Do the form, then you can also upload the pictures.
I think pictures are great. Any more discussion specific on how we take minutes? Is there any more discussion? Is there anything on the, in this batch of minutes that you want to talk about, have issued, questions, not ready to approve?
We should thank Alex for all his hard work.
We should thank Alex for all his hard work.
We should, but no.
But we're not going to, no. There's, there aren't enough words to communicate how valuable Alex is. Okay, so if there's no more discussion on item six, is there a, I would entertain a motion?
Make a motion with a brief opening, all of these that are listed.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If you want to vote to approve the motion as stated by Ms. Johnson, raise your hand. So done. Okay, item seven, commissioners' reports. Remember, there's two minutes. I'm gonna set a timer, and I'll tell you what, I'm gonna start, because I have kind of a lot on my list.
If you have to vote for it longer than you can, then I'll set a timer.
No, you set a timer. So this is, this, this goes into, okay, let's start now. So this goes into, I think it's important that you guys understand the conversations I'm having and the meetings I'm having, what I went out of it. We'll follow up with an email, any kind of post-conversation. But on October 24th and 25th, Mac Miller Institute's having an executive seminar on civic leadership. I'm gonna be there, I think Mary Ann's gonna be there, there's gonna be some city council members, city staff there. On October 29th, I've been invited to present at the special meeting of the city council to discuss our cultural district, which we're gonna talk about tonight. October 31st, I was invited to a staff meeting at City Hall. The topic is redefining public works projects, discussions with city staff. Look right here. So this is kind of cool, we have a guest in the, we have a guest in the room today. Ms. Gail Slager, she called me the other day and she says, "I want to create something that can benefit the Arts Commission and perhaps can be a legacy for the Arts Commission." So she and Sue Clark are hosting and funding this event called Ella Fair, and it's meant to be the first part of an arts market and festival. She's been coordinating all the artists and is, is taking care of everything. With a portion of the proceeds and donations will benefit the Duncanville Arts Commission. I will tell you, I will personally pay for a violinist or someone to perform at one of the events. So if you can put this on your calendar and show up, Ms. Slager has invited me to talk a little bit about the Arts Commission. These are all very accomplished women, over 50. Most of them have roots in Duncanville, their family have roots in Duncanville, and this would be a wonderful homecoming. November 7th, I'm going to attend the Richardson Economic Development Symposium with the state of Texas. I'm gonna ask Mac or anyone who wants to come with me. November 6th, I've been invited to speak at the Comprehensive Plan Committee about the cultural district, some scheduling and planning I'm working on, planning on joint meetings with DCDC, Park, City Council. Have plans to meet with the Texas Commission for the Arts, the Texas Cultural Trust, Community Foundation of Texas, Creative Waco and Waco, and Film Festival. Amy, do you want to come with me? I'd love for you to come. Dallas Arts District Fair Park, Deep Mountain Foundation. And, and now, I think it's important that the Arts Commission develop one-on-one relationship with the hotel motel management in Duncanville. The Come Together Photography Exhibit was a success, $8,500 in prize money, 50 submissions. Monty Anderson says he's totally behind the Arts Commission, and the video of it is on the website, Tim Perry did, and it's exceptional. Anne Perry gets a shout-out. I got an email today from Patricia Ebert talking about the Olden Museum, the Old and New Museum. She says, "I am so ecstatic that the Arts Commission is exploring a partnership with this Jewel of the Music Museum." Councilmember Penny Becker says, "If we need any help getting the tour boosted, he would help us." And last but not least, at the last city council meeting, DCDC mentioned they want to include an arts competition during the Christmas celebration programming. I said, "There's probably lots of commissioners who would like to have a conversation with you," and I think we have a follow-up meeting. Has it been two minutes, Tim? Because that's my, that's my report. You weren't even timing.
I was.
Some real.
Just logged me out.
Okay.
Exactly.
Thank you. Thanks, Tim. Matt.
You practiced.
So poem or no poem?
We love a poem.
All right, you have to write. This one's called "Music Magic." Sounds in motion, lifting, swirling around until crashing downward in bass-filled rush, only to pause, its silence plied and pregnant sigh, brooding lightly by solemn notes, lingering ghost. Suddenly up again to soar with heaven's birds, impassioned trails, building forceful resonance knit, then melody repeatedly reaching inward with music magic to carry sound's emotive song.
Thanks, Ben. Amy.
Only one thing, I did speak to the Texas Ethics Commission at length, three phone calls, and it seems that it's okay for me to remain on the commission and just refuse myself with the theater as funding, or any questions before the commission, or anything else that might seem to be a conflict. But by and large, because of my spirit of the arts, the Ethics Commission felt like it would be important for me to remain on the commission, so I will do so.
Okay, Amy. Anne.
Mac, but, Mac, Don McBurnin asked me to speak at the Lions Club, which I did, and I shared the two videos that, you know, I put together for Juneteenth and the Hispanic Week, as well as the video Tim put together for the, on the photo exhibit that we didn't get to play at collab. But for the record, I am co-sponsoring a film series at the Mac Miller Institute on three Friday nights coming up in the next month, in three months. And you have the flyer for that, and I started teaching a new humanities class today at Mountain View, maybe week class.
You wrote a donation? I started preparing. Oops, sorry, reset. Go.
Duncanville Arts Directory continues to sit on my computer. Someone suggested last time just to do a Google Sheets instead of looking for some sort of pro-rata purchase, and I think that would work okay. When we start populating it, I will see what has to happen with that legally, because I don't really know. But I know we all have people to input, and you've already seen the, the list of things to go into it. The writers group went fine. We had six people there, four people read, one other person committed to reading the next time. We will meet again on November 4th. Library's being very supportive, they're doing the flyers, they're putting it on their website and pages. It's on the electronic, electronic board, it's out on the corner. So it's not as structured as I thought it might be, but that's fine. So come and support that and tell people who write, you don't really have to present anything if you don't want to, and you don't have to have critique. For the record, I did finish the short story that I was agonizing over. They said, "Yes, you look at him smiling." Okay. Thanksgiving Square is proceeding with the Dallas Portland Laureate. She is presenting 40 poems on, not her poems. In fact, it was, it was Mac who kind of spurred us to figure out what was going on with that. He was going to present to, but they're on secular virtues, and it should be a nice afternoon. That is the second, I think it's two to four, something like that. Then, you also have a flyer for an international dinner. It's on the 9th, 6:30. This is a partnership that's an inter- This is a partnership that's an interfaith, interfaith partnership.
That's two. I feel so bad when I do that. Thank you.
No, you've got the flyer.
Everybody wave at council member Goodness, she's on the agenda, so I'm going to move right past her. Yeah.
I had the opportunity to go to a runway fashion show. Reminded me of another art form. Yes.
Who invited? Never mind.
I know. It was, yeah, and why? Anyway. I went. It was in Oak Cliff. It was at a nice venue. I don't, I was never, not familiar with this venue. And it was an interesting show. It was a young Dallas designer, and it was legitimate runway show. And they made some very good use of the space by having their, their people serpentine through rows of seats so that everyone got a front row seat there. And they could charge more money for that, by the way. And, yeah, it was nice. It had a, it had a open bar and a nice reception and then, you know, an after-party kind of thing. But it was, it was, it was refreshing.
I bet it was.
Yeah, it was cool.
Thanks, Tim. And, Tom.
Mary Ann and I participated in Duncan night out. That was really good, nicely attended. It was interesting. There was a little girl that came by. They had gone to one of our, they had gone to the Hispanic pop-up thing. She, she saw me. She was like, "I remember, I know who you are, and I remember you."
Cool.
She was pretty, that was pretty cute.
Cool.
Participated in a health fair that we had in the city recently. And that's about it. Done so much. I can't remember everything.
Thanks, Angela. If there's not any opposition, I would like to give Alex two minutes to talk about. We have someone new over her shoulder. Is she going to be here regularly? Would you like to interview her?
This is Cynthia Campos. She is the Executive Assistant to the Communications and Marketing and Customer Advocacy. And she's going to be helping out so we can stay on top of your minutes, keep everything going. So you are always, each meeting, approving minutes.
We are a well-oiled machine. Thanks, Alex. I'm going to go ahead and, I'm going to go ahead and move on to item 7A, the arts calendar. What's yours, Ann?
You know, I didn't prepare one this, this month, but if you look at the October one, there's still, there's still play coming up. And there's numerous things that have been announced tonight, including some flyers.
Okay. We're going to move on to item eight. We have a guest here. The city manager is here to present. Tell us about the arts fund. Welcome, Arts Commission, Mr. Finch.
Hello, everybody, this evening. Great to see everybody. So, actually, I don't need space. I'm going to stand up here. So really here to have a conversation with you. I'm sure that it can feel exciting and overwhelming at the same time with this new responsibility that you have, having, having funding for the Arts Commission, you know. It's certainly really exciting. You've got two council members here. I think the entire council is really excited about supporting the Arts Commission and, and all the great things that you're going to be accomplishing and that designation of that 15% of the annual hotel occupancy tax funds being collected and being set aside in a special fund for the arts fund. It's actually a new fund, an arts fund. And so that means that there'll actually be a budget for the arts fund that'll go along with that, and then money can be designated annually as we get going. You know, we're going to go through, I'm just going to be honest, we're going to go through some growing pains as we work through this, but we'll figure it all out together. And you have our support and everything. The staff will definitely be supporting you with that process. But then what you, what you would do is there would be money that would be taken from the, what's called unassigned fund balance that would be allocated over to the budget for revenue. And I'm hoping that with your newly-elected chair, just here a few minutes ago, that he also pledges to match everything that we have in the arts fund and come up with all kinds of different funding sources, but...
Might.
Might.
I bet.
You know, honest and truly, this doesn't have to be confusing or difficult or anything. We are going to try to make this as simple as possible. The arts funding portion of the hotel occupancy tax funds actually has a lot of flexibility. It really does. Basically, what we've done, I'm not going to give this to you because there's a few changes that we're still going to make. We have created a new streamlined application for actually both the DCEDC as well as the, and now arts funding, arts funds. That's just a simple, it's really just a three-page application where the entity would come in, make application to our Economic Development Department for whatever it is that they're requesting, whether it's specifically for like a business expansion or whether it's an event or arts funding. So super simple. They can obviously provide more information if they like. They would give us a little bit of information for the event, the theme of the event, location of the event, the request for the arts funding, how it'll be, how it'll involve the city of Duncanville and specifically the hotel occupancy tax. Then it'll come to you guys, okay? So it'll come to you guys. You guys can meet with the applicant. You can deliberate on it. You can discuss it. And then ultimately, what we'd be looking for is a recommendation from the Arts Commission on basically a yes or a no, whether or not you support funding that. Then it'll make its way to city council. Now here's what we're, we're doing a little bit differently, and I heard the, the communications that were mentioned earlier. What I tell you is, been working a lot with the city attorney, and what we have is a contract in place for anybody that gets approved by city council. You don't have to worry about any of that. You're not involved in any of those details. We want to make it super simple for you. If city council approves the funding, then we will enter into a contract with the person who is in receipt of the funding. That contract will detail specifically the funding amount. In this case, like for instance, there was just recent, there was one I signed today for Hoop Fest that got approved by the city council back on October 7th for, for instance, $85,000. Specifically, the contract spells out those portions of the hot funds that makes it qualify. They sign it. I sign it because the council's authorized me to execute that agreement. Then they get nothing except for a piece of paper. After the event, they come in and submit receipts. We verify that those receipts are in keeping with that contract, and then we will approve a check to be issued. So basically, what you guys, what's, what's your involvement in this will be, and I want to talk through this a little bit with you, but you'll receive an application or it's, could be something that you initiate as well. You would make that recommendation. We would have the application, even if it's the Arts Commission itself. We'll still want a paper trail. We'll still want to know what it is that you're doing. Fill that out. That'll make its way to city council to go through that process. If they give the thumbs up and green light, then we'll enter into that contractual arrangement. So how simple is that? Sound good? It sounds, no, it's super simple. What questions? What can I answer?
All right.
So my understanding, we can invite people to apply?
Yes.
So we can do that?
Yes.
That's simpler than I thought.
Good.
Yes.
They have to, but they have to have the funds, and then you reimburse, and then a lot of artists don't. That's the problem. Sometimes they don't have the funds and are seeking some assistance. So is there any leeway in the contract that gives them seed money or anything to start off? Or they have to just figure that part out?
Hot funds is reimbursable, but here's what I will tell you. And you have a member of the DCEDC board here this evening as well. The DCEDC is also very, very supportive of our 4B board of the arts and everything. The DCEDC can do sponsorship grants. So that might be an option in that particular situation.
So, you know, that's something that we mentioned in our joint meeting with city council, is that reimbursement is, is, for arts, is not a best practice within the, within the community. So I appreciate you finding us around that. Hot is one source of funding for this fund. We'll have the opportunity to raise funds, grants. And so...
Which then won't have all the restrictions.
And then it'll be different.
Right.
And so then we'll develop a procedure for that. So it's going to be very important as we move forward to make sure that we develop policies that are smart now and will be smart 10 years from now.
So when they apply for the sponsorship, is that another application that they would apply?
It's literally the same exact application. That's why we're doing one application consolidated. So it'll be the same application if they identify, or maybe we don't find out, but in the course of the conversation with you, we find out that they can't do the money upfront. They need the sponsorship. We would already have the application. We would just follow it over to the DCEDC for the sponsorship.
So is the reimbursement, and I don't necessarily have a problem with it, this is just a question. Is the reimbursement situation or ruling actually in the state tax code? Or is that a local Duncanville rule? Because I know in the past, it had been a grant was a grant. And my history with the hot funds in Duncanville is, they didn't start requiring receipts and doing the reimbursement until, I don't know what year Kevin Hagen came, but it was the second or third year here. And I don't think the tax code changed at that time. The city decided, changed the way they wanted to administer it. So I didn't know if there was any discussion that could be had because, as Angela said, it is hard a lot of times. And so it did used to be that it was a grant that if you got so much money, not unlike when the theater got a Meadows Foundation grant, we got the money. And then we showed them what we did, but we didn't necessarily have to return in receipts. And that's the way the hot funds used to be administered in Duncanville. And then it was changed somewhere along the way to be reimbursement. And I was just curious if that was a local ruling or if that's a state ruling.
Sure. Great question. So it's my understanding, and it probably coincides with the timing that you're talking about, that that's when the city actually started using the contracts and then got away from the contracts for the last two or three years. And now we're getting back to actually have the paper trail and document exactly what it was and everything that's going on. The contracts specifically require the reimbursement so that we can verify that it is hot funds, right?
Right. It was, it was, there was a contract prior to that. It was just a different contract. The contract language was changed, and that's what I was asking. Is that a Duncanville, city of Duncanville, when the city of Duncanville changed the contract, or is that a state tax code?
No, it's not necessarily in the tax code. That's something that council would have to weigh in on if, if they're going to do that. But I think it would make it very, very difficult for staff to verify whether or not it actually would qualify for hot funds if we were upfronting the money.
Yeah, I just had the same concerns that she did. I'm thinking about the artists.
If the commission and, and the board, Economic Development Board, up to a certain amount has to approve those funds, then, then it has to be predetermined that, yes, this would qualify for a hot fund based on how, whatever they present to us. So there's already a predetermination step involved, it seems like to me, that would be involved. And it seems like that for DCECD, it would be just to determine, you know, whether or not they approve or disapprove would be really based on the idea that, yeah, this qualifies or this doesn't qualify. For us, it might be based on that, but more so the merits of what wants to be brought to Duncanville, you know, as an arts commission, what, what someone wants to bring to Duncanville. Will it benefit Duncanville, you know, in the, in the sense of what the arts are about? And so I see two different roles here. I've been on the, I've been on the receiving end as Amy, as, as a chairman of the board for the Museum of International Cultures, which got a chunk of their funding from the hot funds. And I've, I've seen the horror of getting receipts submitted and having them rejected time and time again based on a criteria that seemed to float. Okay. So I know it's hard for an organization that's just trying to stay above water, that relies on an infusion of funding, to have to put their money out that they don't have initially and in order, and then, you know, and then show the receipts on, on the off chance that they may be approved or not approved, even though, you know, they thought that they shouldn't be. So I, I would really encourage the city council to take another look at that policy where at least the arts funding is concerned, the arts avenue funding is concerned. Also, the other question, the other thought I had was, our question is, it used to be like one time a year, maybe twice a year, people could apply. Is, is, is there still a designated time when you can apply for hot funds?
I think that's where you guys need to actually discuss that, have a conversation. Because there really is no reason why you guys can't entertain arts applications throughout the year. I don't see a reason for necessarily a time limit unless you guys think of one, so.
I was watching a DCD's meeting. They're talking about when hot revenue is collected.
So here's the, I wouldn't be too overly worried about that. That, that's getting too much into the weeds. I wouldn't worry about that for you guys because what I'll tell you is we get the quarterly checks, but there is a long history of that amount of money coming in that it's going to be, give or take, that 135, 38, whatever it is, $1,000. So we'll be monitoring that from a budget standpoint, a staff standpoint, but that's, that's really not something you guys have to concern yourself with. It'll drive you nuts trying to do it by quarter and everything else. I think you should do it, exactly what you said, on the merits of whether or not it's something that you support coming to.
Any other questions for the city manager?
Does that make us simple?
Off to a good start.
So, and so I heard, okay, we have the hot funds, which opens us a bank account. And we can add money to that bank account now that we've got one, right? And so we can get funding from other sources. Because hot funds are very restricted, obviously, and if we wanted to throw a mixer, we got no money for mixer unless somebody contributed or a sponsor. So, so, so the door is wide open for both, right, hot funds and...
And, and also keep in mind, he had mentioned, and we have a member of the board, the DCDC as well. They, they're, they're, they're looking for ways to partner with the Arts Commission. I have everyone from DCDC tell me they're energized by us for well. So there's some things like the mixers and the, and the pop-ups that we may be able to go to DCDC for, for a sponsorship, if it's something they think is clever.
Cool. And, and truthfully, there's, there's so much flexibility in the arts portion of the hot funds. If you could figure out a way with one of your pop-ups to tie in the hotel, it very well may qualify for hot funds. And so you can be creative with that, so.
Question. If we had a mixer at a hotel's banquet room, would that work?
You know, it's funny. I actually grabbed a thing from the Hotel Lobby Association because it says Texas law requires that the arts-related expenditure also directly promote tourism and the hotel and convention industry. And then they give some examples, offering art events as part of a tourism hotel event, or use of hotel facilities services by the arts, or creating or causing room night activity at area hotels, or surveying of attendees at arts-related events, and it gives some of the things. So there's, there's an opportunity, pursue that a little bit. There's some, there's a lot of flexibility. Maybe it's that you're bringing in an artist or something, and then that person spends the night at the hotel. You have so much flexibility. There is a lot you can do with it.
You know, he, he said what I heard the city attorney say, what I've heard our council members say, be creative, lean into it. Go for it and conquer.
Have a question. Can we do now events that are ticketed payments? Can they, because like sort of what Tim's saying, we have an account and if people, if we can raise money that way and it can go into that account for us?
So there's just logistics. The, the short answer is yes. You, you could do something like that. There's just logistics we have to work out, right? Because then you've got the Parks Director sitting here. So if it's in a park, right, how are we going to fence off the park? And then who's collecting the money? We have, we'd have to really figure out the logistics of it. I know with some different things that's come up recently, we've even talked about suggested donations or those types of things where people could make a donation to the Arts Commission to attend. There's so many different ways you can get creative with that.
The great thing about this is, is, correct me if I'm wrong, is an enterprise fund. They're meant to grow. They're meant to, to roll out and do something amazing. So it's not like we have something that started at the beginning of the year and it's going to deplete at the end. We can, we can make it grow exponentially. Any other questions for city manager?
I just want to say thank you for this bottom line down here that says portions of proceeds and donations will benefit the Duncanville Arts Commission. You know, we have a bank account.
If there's no further questions, thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time. I'm going to move on to item number nine. We're going to talk about collaborating with Parks and Recreation. Item 9A is movies in the park and concerts in the park. Please welcome and our best Arts Commissioner, Wade, the Director of Parks and Recreation, Mr. Barnes Stevenson.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm very excited to be here tonight. It goes to the long time coming, right? So I'll have to key guys. Thank Alex for putting me after Mr. Finch because... because Mr. Finch shared with you how you're gonna have a, a bank account to spend money. I'm gonna help you spend that money. I'm gonna help you spend that money. So I understand there's been some interest by this commission to incorporate more arts in the park, in some form or fashion, right? And I wanna share with you from a Parks and Recreation Director's perspective, my staff's perspective, we are 100% on board with that effort. Any way that you guys wanna get involved with including art in the parks, we are behind you. That is one component that is, that is severely lacking in our park system. We have no art in the parks. And so we are on board with that. We're willing to work with you. And anything we can do to assist you with that, let us know. Specifically, and I think it was item A on this, we want to talk about how you guys can get involved with some of our events, our community events. And we have a number of events that you guys have been involved with over the years, such as Black History Month, Women's History Month, Juneteenth. Some of the things we've done in the past. And those are still there. And we would love to have some collaboration on those efforts. Specifically, however, we would love to reimagine our concerts in the park and our movies in the park. The attendance for those events, while, haven't been overwhelming. And so we would love to reimagine what that looks like, how that could be. And I think working with your group would be a great way, a great start to enhancing those, those efforts, those events. And I don't, I don't know what that looks like. You probably know better than I, you probably have better ideas than I do. Doing a concert series, doing a, a outdoor film festival, things like that. Things that kind of build upon themselves over time. Bringing in the food truck, all the things that we've all talked about for years that haven't made that next step. And so I think now's the time to take that next step. And we wanna work with you on bringing art to the parks. I know we've got some great ideas over the years. I've gone to several seminars at my conferences about art in park. There's some great ideas out there. Love to work with you and share what some of those ideas are, whoever, everybody move forward with this. And then as well as our events. So whatever we can do to assist you in your efforts and spend your money. With that, I don't know what the next step is necessarily. Perhaps, perhaps we put together a subcommittee of your group, come work with our staff, come up with some ideas, maybe that committee comes back to your larger committee, shares with that, shares those ideas, and we kind of make it take that next step. I'll leave that to you guys. It's your mission.
Can you hang out, so you can hear item ten and item?
Absolutely. Yeah, I understand, we're gonna talk about the, what is it called, the?
It's on there.
Yeah. I can't read my writing.
Cultural district.
Cultural district, yes. Armstrong Park, right?
Right.
What a great start. All of our parks here are. We go to a lot of cities, their athletic complexes have statues, you know, sports statues, things that are going on, things that attract. We have a huge tournament community at Harrington Park and at Alexander Park. Some tournaments almost every weekend at Alexander, but these aren't going on. Same thing with Harrington, we have soccer tournaments going on. Hopefully, cross your fingers, we'll be getting started on our bond projects for Harrington here fairly soon. But what a great time to start initiating that art component to the parks when we rebuild those concession restaurant buildings. So we're all in, and we look forward to working with you guys.
That's awesome. Any questions?
I hope that you'll include this too when you get ready to do your dog park.
Say it again.
Include, include the Arts Commission.
Absolutely, dog park. And the lab, nature preserve. Another great way to introduce art, you know, art sculpture, you know, native type stuff, natural type things. Some great wind sculptures out there, I've seen. Cedar Farm has some fantastic wind sculptures. Things that really fit into that landscape and that nature theme. I know that the, the lab, nature preserve advisory committee has been talking about with our consultant.
So we might have an opportunity to suggest some films?
Absolutely, absolutely, you know. We've done, we try to change up our genres, you know, every film. Try to stick with mostly, I'll say PG, hello, for family, family friendly things. But yeah, maybe we do some type of series that's, that's based upon a certain theme, you know. Have an actual true film festival. I know there's a couple of communities that do that. Maybe they do that in addition to some of the offerings we do already with films. But, you know, anything to, to build up that momentum and get the people coming. We just need help. And I think y'all are a great resource of your knowledge and your ideas. We look forward to working with you on that.
I have a question that might be better to ask at another time. But as far as like a sculpture, would the Parks Department help figure out how to permanently or at least semi-permanently install it?
We will certainly assist with that. My experience with those types of efforts, typically that goes through a process that includes the city council to ultimately approve permanent art sculptures. Yes, we would assist and, and everybody can.
You say concerts in the park. I know during the summer, Cedar Hill has a lot of concerts in their parks. Usually in June and July, maybe Duncanville might get in on it, maybe do it in the fall or early spring.
I would certainly recommend a cooler month, that's my personal preference.
Yeah. Perhaps I'd say early spring or late fall.
You know, there has been, there's been some discussion over the years. Maybe we bring this idea back up, of doing a Best Southwest music series, where each of these four cities hosts something each weekend of a particular month. And we all promote it together. That's been talked about in the past, and that could be an idea. Or we just do something here in Duncanville, where we, over a one-month period, we have a jazz thing every Saturday, every Thursday, where we bring food trucks and art for people to look at. I mean, something that used to happen down there at, at Main Station, you know, the first Friday, I think it was. Maybe we bring something like that to Armstrong, Armstrong Park. That, the ideas are endless, really, yeah.
Anything, any other questions, comments for yous here? Can you hang out for a little bit?
You bet.
All right, appreciate it, thank you. I'm gonna move on to item ten. So we have, I'm gonna, council member at large, Demonica Gooden. So she's here, city council, I'm gonna get in front of this a little bit. City council has created something called council liaisons. As I understand it, council member Penny Baker is a council liaison for D C D C. Council member Coons is a council liaison for parks. And we have the ever-inocent council member at large, Demonica Gooden. So welcome to the table, welcome to Arts Commission, but obviously, you've always been part of Arts Commission. She's here to discuss the role of the council liaison to the Arts Commission, city council's expectations, and the recent Texas Municipal League Annual Conference session, Banking in Art, Making a Smart Investment. Ms. Gooden, floor is yours.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for having me tonight. You guys have done some phenomenal items and initiatives and work thus far in such a short amount of time. So I applaud you for all of the hard work that you've put into it and all of the things you've been able to accomplish so far. We're very proud of when we say that. So would you prefer that I sit here or would you prefer that I come?
Wherever you're comfortable.
Okay, so I'll sit here then. We've heard so many great and promising things. You have money. We have support from the parks. Mr. Finch has spoken to how you have staff support as well. We have now Cece and Alex, and then D C D C is represented. And then you also have the community putting together events. So this is what it's all about, all of us coming together. So my role, how I see it, is number one, is being your advocate, your cheerleader, and your coach. So when I say coach, I am talking about how do we make sure your initiatives, your desires are staying in line with the vision that council has for the city. We are very supportive of the item that you presented to us when we had our joint meeting, called the Cultural District. We are extremely supportive of that. And we are looking forward to that being accomplished and that being your priority. I'm not saying that you can't do anything else. But that is the main goal, is to get there. And while I was in T M L in Houston, I had conversations with council member from Dallas and a council member from DeSoto. Dallas is looking at what we're doing here in Duncanville. Why do I say that? Because District Three council member from Dallas borders Clark Road, which is right up against Duncanville. He is looking to have Dallas start doing some major projects in his district that can kind of partner along with what we're doing here in Duncanville. Of course, I bragged about the Arts Commission. Of course, I bragged about we're gonna be the first one in the Best Southwest to have the Cultural District. Well, just as soon as I said that, DeSoto mentioned that their Arts Commission has already gone over to a nonprofit status. And they're working on the same thing as well. So with that said, needless to say, the competitiveness in me was triggered. And I immediately, as soon as I got back in town, contacted the chair and shared with him the conversation. Because it's exciting, number one, to be a city that, a big city such as Dallas, the ninth largest city in the United States, is looking at what's happening here in Duncanville. So I wanted to share that with you. Also, how I plan to coach is on your policies and your procedures that you're creating, ensuring that they have the necessary components that's required for them to be successful. And one thing that I was taught in my career when creating a policy, write the policy, but at the same time, look at it and see how it can be broken. Meaning, what other way can somebody try to get over on the policy? Secure that hole where there are no gaps. We're gonna do our best in getting that created, getting it to council. I will also coach you on when you get ready to put together your presentations for council, what's necessary, your who, what, why, where, when, and how. Those are the main components that you need to have. And any additional information. I'm of the old school where we over-prepare. Could be that I've been traumatized in some way, some form, fashion. However, I believe in over-preparing and being able to answer whatever question that may be thrown at you. We're not gonna always get it right, but we're gonna put our best foot forward. So I've shared city council's expectations, getting the Cultural District, getting the Cultural District, and supporting the arts growing here in Duncanville. You have the funding now to do that. And feel free to be as creative as possible in getting that accomplished because I believe it's going to be a part of the fabric of who we are. It's been requested for, the Arts and Cultural District has been requested for a number of years. This is not something that's new. I received emails from, I would wanna say, a little bit past 2010, from active, involved citizens and an architect who also lived here in Duncanville, was interested in having an Arts and Cultural District way back when. So it's just now coming to fruition. So I'm asking that we make that our priority and getting that accomplished. So some other items that I learned at T M L. Let me start with saying this. I went into the session wanting to learn as much as possible. And I did learn a few things. But majority of the items that they discussed have already been discussed by Ron and the items that he's presented to the Arts Commission. Sitting in that room, I was so proud to know that we had Ron Thompson here chairing our Arts Commission and you guys working to make these items happen. Who was in the room? You had myself, you had council member Coons, and you also had council member Penny Baker. We heard the presentation, and there was little that I haven't heard before here in Duncanville. So Ron, thank you so much for your research, thank you for your background, thank you for the knowledge that you bring, because we're already halfway there. There are only 54 cultural districts in the state of Texas, or 54 cultural districts in the state of Texas. The Hot Toolkit, that's something that I heard from Ron, that they really talked about. So if you haven't been on that website, go to the Hot Toolkit and look at that. One component is we need a concentration of events happening in the area that we plan on designating as a cultural district. Seven million dollars have been designated as of last year for the Arts and Cultural District throughout Texas. Seven million dollars have been designated in the previous year for arts throughout the state of Texas, about 75,000 per program. I know, same thing I said. So another item we will need is a five-year commitment from the community. The community will inform us of what they wanna see here, and we just act on it. It's the same thing with council. The community informs us of what they wanna see, how they wanna see the budget spent, and we support it, and we bring it to the city manager, and the city manager and staff execute it. So again, you're just listening to the community of what the community wants, and you're making that happen. I would advise that before we even start having any of the initiatives, work with D C D C on getting a baseline of where we are with our economics. Because you wanna be able to measure the impact. Once the Cultural District has been designated, and once the arts have started to grow in about four or five years, you wanna come back and measure and see what type of impact have we had? Have we had in our sales tax? Have we had in our property tax? How has it impacted the hotel activity? Collect it annually to see how you're, how you're doing. Use it as your benchmark to let you know where you need to go, what you need to improve on. I am big on data information driving your decisions. So let's not just do it, but do it for a reason. And see what type of return, what type of investment are we getting on our return? So with that, one other thing that I walked away from was be authentic. When we're discussing the type of art that we wanna see here in our city, our Cultural District, be authentic, be who we are, don't try to be somebody else. In the packet, you have the presentation that was provided by Banking of the Arts. And in it, let's see if I can get to it. So Vernon, Texas. They have a mural that was designed with a local artist and a guitarist as a mural on their wall. Another one, they did another mural of a man who sold tamales throughout his city to put his kids through school, to pay his lifestyle and to raise his children. So they didn't do anything extravagant, it's just a matter of doing what is authentic to Duncanville. And they drive in tourists just to come and take photos next to these type of murals. So it doesn't take a whole lot. This was all of paint and council approving it. So I believe simple things such as that, we can do. One other station, one other thing I wanna highlight is the lift station. The lift station at which top falls, do we know what a lift station is? A lift station is something that your wastewater is lifted to carry to the next destination, pretty much. The city was trying to figure out what to do with the lift station because it became so old and worn down, and it wasn't, it wasn't aesthetically pleasing anymore. So what they decided, and they worked with their Arts Commission, it's a whole entire mural on the side of this building. And now it's an attraction for the city. So what the city was thinking was going to be some type of money pit, and we're having to possibly build another one? They just revitalized it. So with that said, those are some examples of the work that we can do and remain who we are at the same time. So, thank you, and that's my spiel.
Thanks, council member. Any questions, comments for Ms. Gooden?
Thank you.
So at the last city council meeting, it was, it, it was very heartening. I brought buttons, there were buttons everywhere, buttons, buttons, buttons all over during the last city council meeting that said, art, arts. And the other part is, it was very encouraging for me to know that we have three city council members who attended this Banking in the Arts. Council member Penny Baker said from the dais, I get it, eyes wide open, I get it. So we thank you and, and council member Coons for, for really leaning and getting our back on this.
Can I add one thing? Thank you for that. We appreciate you. We appreciate you more than you probably appreciate us, because we're so excited about what you're doing. As we were in Houston, it was art everywhere. Either the city staff has decided just to keep us in this one area. Whatever it was, it worked, because we were so inspired by it. Everywhere we turned, it was art. Even when I was catching my flight to leave out of the international airport in Houston, there is art sculptures. There is art sculptures, art exhibits, a piano playing, a small tiny symphony is in one of the walkways of the terminal. It is art everywhere in that city. I didn't even know, and I go to Houston at least once or twice a year. But this time, I was in an area where I was able to see it displayed, and it was beautiful. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you for your support, and also Jeremy as well.
Thank you.
Thank the City Manager also.
You know what, since we're doing that, what's really important to work here is everybody's leaning in the Arts Commission. And it's, we've never had anyone not trying to move the mountain for us, including fellow commissioners who really play a role. Thank you, Ms. Gooden. I'm going to move on, this is a great segue, I'm going to lead on to item number eleven. This is going to be a discussion on the Cultural District, applying for the Cultural District designation, next steps. And Councilmember in large, Tom Gooden, has asked that we recommend a name for the Cultural District that we can start talking about. So what I've learned from our meeting that we had at the Annex was sometimes I think you think I just say things. So what, I'm looking at you. And so what I've done is, this is, the, what we have to do to get the designation for a Cultural District, all the pieces are there, we have to bring them together. What I've done is I've actually taken this from the Texas Commission for the Arts website. I'm scheduling meetings with the T C A as well. And what I've done is I've gone through this basic description, are you ready to apply? And I want to get us to the point that we can have, we can address Ms. Gooden's request here. So obviously, this is a slideshow from the Texas Commission for the Arts. Are you ready to apply for a Cultural District designation? Almost, so I'm going to go really quick on this, stop me if you're going to slow down. Just for clarification, remember, a Cultural District is the anchor of a recognized, labeled, mixed-use area of a community in which there exists a high concentration of arts and cultural facilities, individual artists, and events that are promoted to attract cultural tourists. Literally, everything happening at our proposed Cultural District, which is Armstrong Park, is going to contribute to this. What you're going to find as we move through this, at some point, this stops being about the Arts Commission and becomes about Duncanville, and literally everything that happens at that park. Who should apply for a Cultural District designation? Communities within existing concentration of arts and cultural assets clustered in one walkable area of the city that they want to promote to visitors. I'm going to go ahead and say this at the very beginning, we have cultural assets all over this city. A cultural asset is not necessarily a cultural district. I'm going to talk about what I believe is going to get us to that designation, and is not intended to ignore things that aren't out, that aren't part of it. And we have a lot of leeway with funding to be able to support arts organizations and arts activities outside of the Cultural District. So it's important that we recognize we have a lot of bandwidth here. You've heard me say this, the Texas Commission for the Arts designated Cultural District should be ready for tourists now. So every time I've said, "We've got to be doing it now," if the streets aren't ready, it's not now. If there's planned building later on, it's not now, it needs to be now. District should be activated with predictable events. So one of the things the Arts Commission has an opportunity to lean into is we work with nonprofit arts organizations to create a series. Like the Parks Director had mentioned, how we make it predictable. So first-time events, we don't know what's going to happen, but it needs to happen. And it needs to happen, it needs to happen, so everybody gets used to something. Also, the arts organizations know that Duncanville is creating these ongoing activities. Also, the local business community knows that, well, if they're going to have jazz every Tuesday, we can develop promotions around jazz every Tuesday. At the same time, we're collecting all the metrics that they need to make sure they're having the information that they need. We have existing nonprofit arts organizations, how do we help them as well? And we all be able to rise with the tide. Visitors to the district should know they're in a special place with interesting things to do and see, arts, culture, restaurants, lodging, and fun. So what I've done through this, I've set a slide from the T C A, and then I've color-coded everything. Green means I think we're ready to go. Yellow means we've got twelve months to really lean into it. Red is we have to think really hard about how we move forward on it. Two important dates, we're going to have to write a letter of intent on January thirty-first with the deadline for the full application, June fifteenth. When? I'm going to say twenty-twenty-seven. So we have fiscal year twenty-twenty-five, we have fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. I think we can get most of this done in those two fiscal years, so we can start twenty-twenty-seven to actually do the application. You're going to see as we go through this, that everything we're doing, I think the community's going to love. So this is when I think that we can do it, but why not be aggressive and see if we can get it in twenty-twenty-six? All right, this is where, are you ready for a district designation? First thing on here, is there strong political support? I do this. Yes, there is strong political support. I took this screen capture, well, off the internet, October fifteen, at eight-thirty-six P M, and that's when every City Council member approved the arts fund for the Arts Commission. Okay, so this is green, yellow. Are you ready? So there is strong political support, we have that now. District planning efforts reflect the diversity of the community. We really haven't started, but we do know that we have a comprehensive planning commission that I've been invited to speak at. The Cultural District is going to be key, critical to that comprehensive plan. Not just that we're doing things, but we're checking all the metrics. You know where the funds are coming from to pay for the district development promotion activities. We know where part of this is going to come from, and we'll have opportunities to fund other places. There is marketing and promotion strategies for the plans of the Cultural District. So here's the thing, a Cultural District is a product. It's a product that the city is offering to our community and people outside of it. We've got to package that product, we've got to improve the product, and we've got to market the product. So it's really important that everything that we do feeds into, when you come into the Cultural District, you know you're in it. And every single thing that happens in the Cultural District, there's marketing and promotion all over town, and ways that people can support that. We're going to have to develop signage, there's going to have to be signs that come from the highway pointing directions to the Cultural District from several highways. There is strong support from the arts and cultural leaders, I think we're ready to go. You have an agency with the staff and management capacity to act as administrative and fiscal agent, that's D C E D C. That's not going to be us. You have access to research and planning expertise. Yes, so one of the great things right now is we see City Council going to it. I've read in my Commissioner's report, the meetings I have set up, I want to make sure that we have the best. In Dallas County, there are three cultural districts, there's Deep Ellum, there's Arts District, and there's Fair Park. At the Nasher event, I introduced the mayor and the folks who were there to the lady who made two of them. We're going to have the best advice in doing this. You met her too. You have access to, you know why you need a Cultural District. That is green, here's the fun part, we're all going to want, we're all going to have a different Y. Parks is going to have a different Y, D C D C is going to have a different Y, Arts Commission is going to have a different Y. Keep Duncanville Beautiful is going to have a different Y. The community is going to have a different Y, city staff's going to have a different Y. But we're there, and you can tell the outpouring of people who want to see something. And the cool thing about the Y is, at some point, we're going to get out of the way, and the community is going to make this their own. Again, remember, this is a product that we are packaging. Our product is going to be the arts and how we bring it in in our community. So what is cultural tourism? These are the parts that I think that we're ready to go. The travel industry's term describing travel directed towards arts, we have that. Heritage, we kind of have that. We have a heritage, we have a history park in Armstrong Park, recreation and natural resources. Yeah, we have a brand-new nature preserve in the city of Duncanville. Theoretically, in the next three, four, five years, we'll have a Cultural District and a nature preserve, and they're all going to be marketed and parketed together. So, and this is something that you heard Ms. Gooden mention. So this is not new, tourists have come to Texas for decades to experience these things. But in a good way of connecting visitors to authentic cultural experiences, what is authentic? Authentic is authentic to us. The people who live in Duncanville, the people who make art, the people who love art, that's where we become authentic. There's a lot of conversation about what is our vision for, well, nobody at this table is qualified to determine what the cultural direction of this city is. But what we can do is we can make it easy for everyone in the community to come up with that vision and explore it in their own unique ways. These multicultural and multi-generational visitors make travel choices related to performances and artistic activity. So multicultural, multi-generational, happening in our art, happening right now in the Armstrong Park is, let's talk about the Fourth of July. This is my hometown, I grew up here, I remember throwing out candies. I remember standing outside the church when it was a church, and it was hot, but I'd run out when I'd grab the candy. I remember that. I took my nephew there, generational. This is the stuff that people are going to remember, the stuff is already happening. We're not starting from ground zero, we're just bringing everything to the table. Architecture, okay, we have to be realistic, no one's going to come to Duncanville to look at the architecture. Historical, okay, well, let's give them time. Historical offerings, okay, we don't have the Alamo, but we do have some heritage things I think that we can lean into. How to set the boundaries, okay. Contiguous and walkable, there's only one place in the entire city of Duncanville that's contiguous and walkable, that has all these other elements, that's Armstrong Park, along the trail. There are other cultural assets, there are things that surround it that we would love to see and be improved by it, that we'd love to have a role in it, but it's not walkable and it's not contiguous. Things that look walkable and contiguous on a map aren't necessarily when you're there and sit you. If you're at the edge of the park, if you're facing Main Station, it feels like we should be able to run over there, but you can't. The park starts there, there's green space, there's streets without sidewalks. Now potentially, because we have a Cultural District, that stuff can be improved, but it's absolutely irrelevant to us getting a Cultural Designation. The artistic resources play a vital role in the livability and economic development of the city. Every present, I never say anything to this commission that I can't back up with proceeds. If you ever look at anything that I've discussed with this group at rethink-place, I put every citation for every study, economic and social and cultural, in there. What we find is, over and over and over again, the arts improve the livability and economic development of the city. There are times where I can talk to this commission about something that I think is going to be so important, and it falls on, maybe it falls a little on deaf ears, but I don't know if I talk to economic development, it's like I'm singing, I'm singing hallelujah to a choir. Everyone is going to be able to lean into this and find their own Y. All right, so this is important, the district must be actively engaged in promotion. Y'all, we have a Cultural District now, we just have to call it, we just have to treat it. We just have to make sure that we have brochures to come to the Cultural District. We have, the second, that we can engage Parks, Economic Development, Keep Duncanville Beautiful, the city staff, we need to start treating it like a Cultural District. Includes, okay, restaurants. Venues, hotels, other amenities, we've got that, restaurants. This is going to be fun to lean into. So since we have a member from D C D C here today, I will tell you, I look at the Arts Commission as economic development through the arts. I believe that the Cultural District is a brand-new tool to create opportunity for economic development. Everyone, like the Destination Duncanville Plan that came out, everything was entertainment, arts, restaurant. Entertainment, arts, restaurants in various degrees. We can lean into this restaurant. I believe in the next two years, we can have some cool new restaurants to support the restaurants that we already have, but they need to be what? They need to be walkable to the Cultural District. And what is walkability? Okay, it has a center. Armstrong Park is our central park, that is the center of our city. I would argue that is, that is everybody's favorite place in Duncanville. We're just giving Duncanville new reasons to love it. I'm going to recommend that's our center. So, and this is also to remember, our Cultural District is how we define it. The Texas Commission for the Arts doesn't tell us that it has to be a certain way. So let's talk about the three there in Dallas County. We have the Arts District in downtown Dallas, we have Fair Park, and we have Deep Ellum. They're all cultural districts, they're completely dissimilar. Plano has a Cultural District, Denton has a Cultural District. Plano's around their main street, Denton's around their town square. Wynn's Borough, Texas, three thousand five hundred people have a Cultural District. We can have our Cultural District if we make it around the park, I recommend. There's enough people for business and activity to flourish, absolutely. Mixed income and mixed use with affordable housing nearby, absolutely. Parks and public spaces to gather and play, by definition. Designed for pedestrians' use, absolutely. Close to schools and workplaces, absolutely. Streets designed for bicyclists, pedestrians, and people with disabilities, absolutely. Public transportation, I put in yellow with a zoot, we have Star Transit. So we kind of have some public transportation, we've got to figure out some great ways to bring Star Transit in this and be creative. I would like to recommend, I would like to recommend that we call this the Armstrong Park Cultural District. Why? It's a place, it's really important that the Cultural District is defined by a place, well, it's Armstrong Park. We have all the elements for favorable application, I believe we have most of them. Those that are missing, the yellow and the red, I think that we can get in two years. Most of them, I think that we can get in one. This is a public space, so everything that happens in the Cultural District will belong to the community. So you don't have to worry about somebody selling a building, you don't have to worry about somebody changing a different kind of business coming in, you don't have to worry about zoning, changing of it. This is a public space, everything that we're putting into it, public money is going to public spaces, private money is going to go to shared places, place, spaces, the entire community must work together. It's been very important, we reach out to the business community, the developers, they have to recognize this because there's all these things that we've talked about. I believe we have a strategy for it, I don't want to talk about it tonight, but I believe we have a strategy through cultural corridors that from this, that private ownership around the Cultural District can begin to activate this activity. Signage and branding, remember, Armstrong Park is going to be special, it's going to look like a Cultural District, it's going to feel like a Cultural District, and everything that's happening there, including the splash pads, is part of this. And let me say this again, if we call it a Cultural District, if we use it as a Cultural District, it will be our Cultural District. So look here, Armstrong Park, this is the big sign, it's over there by Wheatland. It's broken, Kidsville Historical Park, you know, that's got to be repaired. If we just put Cultural District there, we're halfway done. Literally, we can decide what our Cultural District is. We have all the City Council wanting to make this happen, we have the City Hall wanting to make this happen. That needs to be repaired, Kidsville isn't even there anymore. If we call it a Cultural District, we've got most of the work done. So what I would like, and I'm going to need Angela to make sure we do this right. Ms. Gooden has asked that we agree on something tonight, so she can go back to City Council and to the other departments, say this is what the Arts Commission's recommended. I would like for us, and I'm going to go through all this before we talk about it, that we call it the Armstrong Park Cultural District. It's a public space, it's a public park, it will always be a park, it will always be a Cultural District. The boundary is Armstrong Park. Yes, we have cultural assets outside of it, we have cultural assets close to it. We're going to get really clever to figure out how they all fit together, but that's why we have really amazing people who live in the community to help us do this. Later on, we're going to have to talk about some other things, this is really in-depth. The C D M E is a Cultural District Management Entity Organization. This is going to be very specific, we're going to have to apply by the rules. Funding policies, methodology, priorities, metrics, all the stuff that the City Manager was talking about us tonight, we're going to have to develop that, what works in the, what's going to work from the Cultural District is going to have to work outside the Cultural District. Program development, tracking, and funding, so all the things we've talked about. How do we, if we have this bank account, how do we spend the bank account? I look at money as a tool. Hot funds is one handle. We're going to have other handles. All of this is a tool to make sure that not only there is an epicenter of artistic activity and people bringing, coming together for this, but you know what? Arts organizations need to stay here. Because at some point, Arts Commission has a lot of opportunity to get in front of it, but at some point, that's got to flip. They've got to have patron support, they have to have ticket support, they have to have sponsor support so that they can be self-sustaining. One of the great things about the Arts Commission is we are very uniquely positioned to bring brand-new funders into town who want to stay in town, as well as helping our local patrons figure out new ways to support the arts. Off-campus development, that's anything that happens outside the Arts Commission, outside the Cultural District, there's lots of ways to develop that, we're going to have to bring new people in. Those are not going to be solved at this table, we have parks here, we have economic development here, we have a Chamber of Commerce, we have a community theater, we have lots of ways to develop that. Stakeholder development, and then what you're going to find is regional, state, and federal partners. When I was at the, the thing that was at the, Night Out, National Night Out. There was a representative from Yvonne Davis's office, and he's asked that as we develop, particularly in terms of state funding, that we stay connected. And that's something honestly, we haven't really talked about, because we talked about, we, we, folks in the region and the state want to see this here. And that's something we need to really understand, is folks want to see this, brand-new dollars can be made available to it. So this is what I would like, Angela, I need your help. I would like for us to agree tonight- I would like for us to agree tonight on the name and the boundary, on these recommendations.
I just want a motion to name Armstrong Park.
And the boundary.
And the boundary, okay. I move that we name Armstrong Park Cultural District and the boundary of Armstrong Park.
Any discussions or seconds? Anybody wanna talk about it?
I think it's such an important decision that I'm loath to vote without Sarah and Tiffany present for this decision. And I'm not in favor of it. I know you're very enthusiastic, but let me just share something about Little Rock.
Before you do that, we have got a second before we have a discussion.
Is there a second? So, we have a motion and a second.
I'm from Little Rock, and growing up, North Little Rock was totally a non-entity for us. Now, they have a thriving arts district. It's called the Argenta Arts District. It has some of the characteristics that you spoke about. It has murals, restaurants, I mean, there's a whole different feeling now. It's very exciting. There's a trolley, there's galleries, there's a theater, traffic boxes, there's murals, there's a big sculpture of a person with hands like this with benches that you can sit on. Anyway, they've done incredible things with their arts district. I don't associate the park at all with an arts district or the boundaries of the park. I associate the theater and Main Station and the, those events that, you know, Brian put on a whole bunch of things, the arts evenings, the poetry. And we've done gallery work up there, our arts walks, various things. So, I don't have an association with the park as an arts district. And in the same way, you know, when the land property came up, I never associated it just as a nature preserve. I always thought it should be developed as a cultural center with nature and architecture in nature. That's just my perspective. So, I would like to see a unique name, like in North Little Rock, they had the Argenta District. It became a very exciting place to go to now. As opposed to when I was growing up, where there was nothing happening over there. It was just North Little Rock across the bridge, you know? So, I'm sorry, but those are my feelings. And I just feel like it's such a big decision to make that, again, with Tiffany and Sarah not here, perhaps it needs more consideration.
Any more discussion on, Dr. Perry?
So, the boundary being Armstrong Park, that also includes the library and Hopkins.
Yeah, because it goes all the way around it. Have you ever walked around the park?
Yeah.
Okay, so it goes all the way around.
So, my thinking is, yeah, I mean, I can see that unit as a cultural district. I tend to feel it doesn't really offer the restaurant aspect of it. I mean, walkability is important. To me, just as important as restaurants and hotels. And there's certainly no hotel in that area at the moment. The walkability issue is something that can be addressed by the city council and the city in terms of, if we wanted to extend it to Main Station to include the theater and restaurants, then the city could get behind us and try to create the walkability scenario. So, anyway, just a couple thoughts on that.
Okay, any other thoughts?
My understanding is that this is just a starting point.
It is.
And from there, all the other things, like the theater and the Ben Franklin place and Main Street, they could become part of it, almost like how Deep Ellum, those areas were later, as it, your cultural district, as the beginning of it, but it can expand over time.
Well, here's the way that I look at it. It could, but why? The why is, is the answer to that. So, if the cultural district is a park, and for all the reasons that I think that it stands the best chance of getting that designation, how does, from the edge of the park, moving north along Main Street, how does this activity benefit that? So, again, this is gonna be a two-year process. But I believe that there's going to be some way to use this activity to create some cultural development along those things outside the cultural district. And important to both Perrys to recognize, we have to be using it as a cultural district now. So, Main Station's not being used as a cultural district. Lampaz is not being used as a cultural district. It's also private property.
Sarah?
And, remember I said there's gonna be cultural assets in the community, but a cultural asset is not a cultural district. So, we have cultural assets all over town. What I want this commission to recognize, what I believe, based on what we just went through, the best opportunity to get a cultural district designation is to make it Armstrong Park. Now, does that remove? I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm hearing, is this is just the start to get the designation. That's it.
Correct.
All the other things will happen, or could possibly happen. That's just so that we can get the funding and the, to get it started and get the monies and things like that.
And I spoke with, and I spoke with a developer who owns the land that we talked about. He's for this, and we can bring him to, you know, he'll come to meetings. But at no time did he indicate that he wanted, because we can bring him to talk about it, that he wanted those designations on his property. So, Dr. Perry, I'm not meaning to take away from your comment because I know that we're more like Fair Park than we are like Deep Ellum. But here's the thing, a cultural district, a city gets to create its cultural district. And so, these things that you're talking about, the things that inspired you in Little Rock, because we have to move forward. We have, we really have to move forward. Do you have a plan or suggestion or recommendation how we can be treating, any of this can be happening right away, better than the park?
I feel a little bit on the spot, but. I just think it takes some more consideration regarding a name and a boundary. I guess I never was comfortable with a designated boundary that's pretty tight. I like the larger.
So, I didn't make those things up. Now, the city can create any kind of cultural district it wants. To get the designation from the state of Texas, and the reason that we do that is because we'll be eligible for funding that we're not eligible now, which will benefit those private organizations, is we have to start treating it like the cultural district now. And so, what the Arts Commission does with brand-new money and brand-new tools is we start to program arts in the park. We start putting murals, we start creating that, we start putting in sculptures, all these things that the Parks Director talked about. We can start doing that right away. If it's somewhere outside, you're gonna have to go to the business owners, the property owners, and figure out with them how you're gonna do that. And right now, it's already happening. All this stuff is already happening.
Is there not some way that we can piggyback onto the downtown Dunkinville designation? The city has already designated downtown Dunkinville, which includes Main Station and the theater and all of the things along Main Street, so that we have the Armstrong Park Cultural District and downtown Dunkinville. Perhaps we market them together. I understand what she's saying. I totally understand, as I mentioned before, it has to be walkable. It's not. You know, like you said, you didn't come up with these rules. They are what they are. But I also recognize Anne's concern, and I share some of those same concerns. We've got Roma's, we've got existing restaurants that have been very, very supportive of the arts that I would like to not exclude, but if we could bring them into the fold by, maybe in some marketing, not in the application, but in the way that we market it as downtown Dunkinville and the arts district and the cultural district, so that we pair that in our language, so that we're not excluding. I understand in order to get the designation, we have to, it has to be walkable, it has to have specific boundaries. I understand why I'm not, you know, I don't have to like it, but it is what it is. But I also feel like it's important that we are sensitive, and, you know, my patrons are gonna ask me that. You know, and I can explain to them all the logistics all I want to, and they're still gonna say, well, I don't understand. Well, the theater isn't part of the, you know, and I'll have to explain once again. But if we somehow in our marketing language, not in the application, but in the marketing language, were able to embrace both, and that would just simply be a city thing, I think that we could perhaps get where we need to go down the road, you know? And it really always is in marketing. And it's the way that you share that information. But I understand the need for the boundary. The walkable is the main thing. And you're right, we don't, you have to, if it's gonna be, you've got Lone Star Place, you've got all these other places where you'd have to get the business owner to be on board and wanna be part of that, and they may or may not, depending on where they live and what their business interest is. But I believe that we have an opportunity to include both of these things if we just phrase it properly in our marketing.
And I wanna, and I wanna address that really quickly. You know, recall I said that at some point, this stops being about the Arts Commission. And a cultural district is a tool. So, I know that there is plans for Main Street development, but it's not right now. The plans are there, but the things aren't there. This needs to be happening. Notice everything in there from the Texas Commission for the Arts is being used as a cultural district now. And so, from my perspective, because I've talked with the city staff, and they see, okay, and I've talked with local developers, okay, if there's this central activity, this turns into our central park, then there's gonna be some opportunities for folks in downtown Dunkinville to take that activity, to take that momentum, and make a corridor. I did not invent the term "cultural corridor." So, that is what municipalities and cities use if they have a concentration of cultural activity within a place that's not, that's like a park or like a zoo, then how do you build that activity and move it out? So, Dr. Perry, my intention is not to be dismissive of what you're saying. My concern is urgency. My concern is we have an opportunity right now because the park is already a cultural district. We're just not calling it.
Just need to walk around over there and see how cultured I feel.
Well, and so, here's the other part. So, here's the other part to think about, Dr. Perry. What this is, this is a recommendation. I think there's a lot of cultural things happening in the park, and one of the great things about the Arts Commission is we have an opportunity to invest in it and make it better. We have a chance to elevate it. So, where you don't find cultural enlightenment, some people do. There are children who use that park. There are children who don't have financial resources that you have. There are families who are single-parent families. The only place they can take them is our park. So, what do we do? We put arts in it. We make it free, we make it accessible. So, you also have to understand that folks who are gonna use this park, use our cultural district, they're not all gonna be like you. We have to think about everybody all at once in this. And so, as we think about this, my perspective is, this is already a cultural district. It's already being used as a cultural district based on the definition from the Texas Commission for the Arts. And then with that, the reds, the yellows, that's what we can lean into for the next 12 to 24 months. And there's not a single person in the community that would be bothered by the fact that the Arts Commission is trying to get restaurants or work with DCDC or work with parks. How do we create something interesting? And that is going to be the process that we see because we already have it. I'm worried if we stymie this conversation, if we wait, we have a quarrel. Everybody read the agenda. I'm sorry they can't be here, but if we stop and wait till November, we're not gonna have a meeting in December, what are we telling the community that we wanna have this, but we're gonna wait? And I recognize that, okay, this is not like Deep Ellum. We need to make it more like Deep Ellum. One may never be like Deep Ellum, because you know what? This is Dunkinville. We have families that use the park, and you can see it during the Mexican Independence Day, you can see it during the Fourth of July. You can see it. That's how it's used. And I, I used to have this employer say, let's not major in the minors. I'm concerned that we're gonna worry about the things that we can't change right away when we're working with the tool. We have the tools available to us. And at any point in the next 24 months, DCDC, Parks, City Council, keep Dunkinville beautiful, new funders are gonna come in here, and they're gonna come up with new opportunities. Remember, the Performing Arts Center in Dallas used to be called the Dallas Center for the Performing Arts. Now, it's AT&amp;T. So, new activity, new energy is gonna change things. I hope this changes downtown Dunkinville. But it's not the conversation here. This is the conversation. And what I would like to leave, because Ms. Goodness asked, is that we recommend a name and a boundary. This is my recommendation based on the Texas Commission for the Arts if it's gonna have the most favorable outcome. Sorry.
For the name, is it possible that maybe since Armstrong Park, the entrance is on Main Street, we put Armstrong Park, Main Street Cultural District? That way, it sort of incorporates with, even in the future, with Main Street? Because nobody's gonna know the boundary unless they go and read all that stuff. Let's just say Armstrong Park, Main Street Cultural District, because it's on Main Street, the entrance.
Maybe.
Would that suffice?
I think that makes it way too long for people to say.
Okay.
But I respect what you're trying to say. You know, I think, you know, and I can speak to that since I run the community theater, which would be outside of the cultural district. I understand the need for this. Am I bummed because the theater's not part of it? Yeah, a little bit. I mean, if I'm gonna be totally honest. But I also understand about hubs and spokes on wheels. And you have to have a hub, and then you can have a spokes. And so, I feel that basically what it means is, Anne, you're gonna have to just make sure we have those poetry nights and all those cool events in the park and get those there because they're not at Main Station right now. So, you can have those cool events there. The theater's gonna look at maybe doing Shakespeare Under the Stars like we used to do 15 years ago. I mean, I think that there are opportunities. So, yeah, I'm a little bummed, but I also get it and I understand the business side of it, and that's what you have to look at. And I feel like we just have to look at hubs and spokes. And I think that it's incumbent upon us then to really knuckle down and get those kinds of activities that we want to create that art in the park that we feel is important to happen there, to offer all of the diversity and the different activities that we wanna see happen. But I understand completely where you're coming from. I just, I just feel like, I feel like we need to, as Ron, I think we need to just get it done, so to speak, if we're gonna get the designation and the funding, because it's gonna take a long time to get the walkability farther down. And then we would lose this opportunity, you know, that we have right now. So, that's what I don't want to lose.
In this order, I saw Mack, I saw Mary, and I saw Tim. So, let's do that order.
I like what she just said. Getting the things that we see that used to be at Main Street to go in the park. So, the poetry nights, the art, you know, First Friday-type things, the theater, get the people that we want that are outside it to come do things in it. If we want schools to be involved in it,[1677.88] If we, if we want schools to be involved in it, then bring the school to do an activity there. Or, you know, be part of a arts thing. That way, we're bringing in the people that are outside that wanna be, be part of it, but they're doing it in the park so that we get that hub and spokes like you were saying.
All right.
Well, I'd like to talk about the name just a second. It is Armstrong Park, and to do any kind of change would make it invisible to the community. The branding, the, uh, the, uh, marketing, all of that would be massive. And yes, I, you know, maybe there's a reason for agenda. Maybe there's a silvery anchor of some kind there. No reason in sometime in the future, it couldn't change, but, you know, Deep, Deep Ellum is a really, really old name. It's not something that's made up. I mean, it's got a lot of cultural, historical significance. So I think, just think of it maybe for now, this is simple, it's direct, it's very specific, and just imagine some silver thing in the future maybe. Because I don't think you can change that.
So, yeah, I, I like what Amy said about, you know, hub and spokes. In the, in the grand scheme of how you weigh out, you know, what's most important to the Texas folks? Is it walkability? Is it, is it restaurants? You know, how do those factor in together? You know, which, or, or they all need to be there, which if it's, if restaurants and eateries, I mean, I know there's places right across the street from Armstrong Park, right across the street. Then if, but if eateries are a big part of that, I suppose food trucks might be, you know, for a while. Food trucks could sort of serve that, that purpose, and they do in Dallas in places. I do see that Main Station gave the city something very unique when it had its activities. It gave the city, uh, it, it, it wasn't under the jurisdiction necessarily of the city. They weren't responsible for the art walk or whatever happened at Main Station. It was grassroots. It's a grassroots thing that happened there. To bring that now into the city property will require, as, as Bert was saying, or Bart was saying, it's gonna require, you know, figuring out how we do the kinds of stuff that we did around the city now, bring it into the park. You know, that's new rules, new, you know, new considerations to, to think about. Which I'm sure can be sorted out. I, I, I do have a question about, so you said that De Soto has, has put in their application?
No, I didn't say they put in the application, I said that they have, uh, they're considering it, but they're building their strategic plan. They're also a nonprofit organization, uh, with their Arts Commission. They have a nonprofit status, which allows them to do a little bit more with, you know, receiving funding. So the sooner we can get a cultural district, not even just about competitive with other cities, we are now better positioned to be able to apply for funding from the National Endowment of the Arts and other funding, because we now have a cultural district. So, no, they haven't applied yet, but they are nonprofit and they are working on their strategic plan according to the conversation I had in Houston.
So they probably don't have information as to what their boundaries would look like there. We know that they have a, a theater, we know that they have a, a lot of arts related things in their city center, which we, we don't yet, but.
I don't know what their boundaries are, I don't know what they're considering. If I can offer something. I do know that we are currently using Park for a number of events. We say we don't have arts there, but we have performing arts happening there all the time in our park. We have, uh, when we get ready to have, host something, Juneteenth, Hispanic Heritage Month, when we have the Fourth of July, we have all type of different cultures there. And it's not just generally about, um, I don't wanna say, it's not just about the culture as far as your ethnicity. It's the culture of the community as well. So there's a lot of activity already currently happening at the park now. Does that limit the art just to this boundary that we're setting or that you're setting as the cultural district? No, you have corridors that you can have. We are working on a comprehensive plan currently, and it's important that we, or that you kinda inform council, what you're considering as the cultural district. That way we can work it into the comp plan and then we can have art corridors, or cultural corridors that lead to it. It doesn't have to stop just in those boundaries. You see it happening in other cities where they identify their cultural district. And you see restaurants are now attracted to moving towards that area because they know they benefit from tourism. And it boosts the economy. So currently what we see right now happening, as it leads to Armstrong Park, that has the potential, a strong possibility of improving in the future.
I think it's also, it's, it's important to recognize, I get very passionate about this because I've been living, eating, and breathing this for 24 months. And for me, it's clear. And, and, and remember, at some point, this isn't about the Arts Commission anymore. We have a role and an important role. We have the Parks Director here, we have DCDC here, we have the City Manager, we have two City Council members here. This is gonna move past Arts Commission where our major role is probably gonna be funding the arts. And the city's gonna create new strategies, new, so this, we're not City Council. Whatever we vote on today does not mean that suddenly everything changes. Now, that picture? Look, that needs to be replaced. Why not call it a cultural district? So what I would like, recall I said we have cultural assets all over the city. That doesn't mean a cultural asset defines a cultural district. We've, as long as there's been Armstrong Park, since I was a kid, since I was little Ronnie, I would go to the park for the Fourth of July. And there was music, and there was fairs, and there was art, and there was fireworks, and there was food, and there was fun. That's what I remember, I'm 52 years old. I can take my 10-year-old nephew, and you know what? He's gonna have the same experience. It's artistic, it's creative, it's cultural, the community is going there. There's splash pads, there's walking, there's a library, there's a senior center that's used for everything. There's a gazebo, there's a Poe Hobden Amphitheater, there's a little historic park that we can turn into a living park. We can turn this into something for everybody, and there's gonna be some really clever entrepreneurs. It's like, okay, they've created Mass Effect right here in the middle of the town. I own this little bit of property over here. I recognize right now, I've already had a conversation with the person at Cloak Collective, and, and, and right now their, their front facing is, is tattoos. I said, but you know what? The city's about to really lean into, uh, murals. Can't you bring a bunch of murals here, create a muralist association? And then his brain started clicking. And I think we have to recognize the creative and the entrepreneurial spirit of the folks living here or the folks nearby here. And we give them something, and they're not our answers, they're not our solutions. And so what I'm asking in this Arts Commission today is let's get it started. If Arts Council Liaison can go back and say after a heated conversation, passionate conversation, and right before Ron Thompson had a stroke, they thought, they thought, and you know what does? That sets the ball moving. It's not the end all be all, it gets us moving forward. And so, Dr. Perry, when you talk about what inspired you in Little Rock, you're gonna have a million opportunities to talk about the inspiration, but also, you're a commissioner for the city of Duncan, Duncanville representing the arts. You get to bring the arts here in the capacity that you wanna see it and that you're passionate about. Congratulations, you have 12 months. You know, and it's, and then, and then that's a role that we get to do. We get to inspire other people to do it.
Got a motion on the floor.
So we have a motion on the floor. And we have a second. Is there any more discussion? We can take a vote on it? Okay, would you please, would you please repeat the motion that we can take a vote on?
Motion on, on the floor is to name Armstrong Park Cultural District with the boundary of Armstrong Park.
And we have a second?
Yes.
We take a vote? Any more discussion, we'll take a vote? All in favor of the motion is describing this. Ms. Angela, raise your hand. Opposed, raise your hand. Carrie's. Thank you.
Please still be my friend.
Be your friend.
Why would I not?
Council votes in different directions all the time, and we're still talking about one another.
And so, so Dr. Perry, I say this all the time, and we have so many people in the room right now, and they, and folks need to realize, Arts Commission gets messy, look, Tim and I, and then you know what we did? We had coffee, we talked about it, and I hugged him goodbye, and everything's great. Arts Commission always comes together, always comes together, and I think that's the bridge we build in the community. Because when we do it, everybody can do it. On that, we're gonna move on to item 12, Arts and Humanities Month. Item A is McMillan's Open House, and, and, and item 12B is Olden Year Museum Tour.
I'd like this to stay on the agenda, but not necessarily under Arts and Humanities Month. That, just to report again, that Ron and I had an excellent meeting with Claudia over at McMillan, and she was very excited about the idea of an open house, but we weren't able to make it happen during Humanities Month. And Olden Year reported that they are remodeling, and they are very excited toward the first of the year of opening it again. So the, if these items can stay on the agenda, but I'm not sure we're really ready.
Do you wanna move to reports next step?
Reports.
Moving back to reports.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. But I think one of the concerns about the open house at the McMillan, Claudia said it, it costs about $900 to have one of what she, she makes a very, they order a very nice catered kind of thing. That was her idea for a budget for an open house. And I'm not sure whether that comes under the funding we have right now. So I don't know at what point that would be important to talk about, but it's nice to have it on the agenda, just not under Humanities.
Would you be open to have the conversation later after we've got our policies and procedures and how we fund? Because, you know, we have, uh, we have existing arts organizations in Duncanville. I think that we need to be able to, to have a, 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 a policy on how we help. So rather than identifying certain ones, I, we, we did have that conversation. But perhaps we can, when we have our policies in place, we can, we can have a better conversation with her. Because we have other arts organizations in town, then I would like to be able to, to, to do that equitably. Any more conversation on that item? Okay, we're, we're almost done. We've got item number 13, November, December meeting dates discussion. Presumably in December, our meeting is gonna fall on Christmas Eve. And, uh.
Your, November meeting falls on the 26th, which is the day before Thanksgiving.
It's a Tuesday. Before the Thursday.
No, 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 you're right, you're right, I apologize. It is that Tuesday, so it is a couple days before Thanksgiving, sometimes people leave town. I just wanted to make sure that was on there for consideration, and then, yes. I will come unlock the door for Christmas Eve, so that you guys can have a meeting.
Um, I won't be able to make a meeting.
I can promise you this is not what I planned to do.
Is it possible to schedule a, a diff, like another Tuesday night for, like the week before or something?
Unfortunately, your Tuesday nights cut. Uh, there's council the first and third. I think there's another meeting that happens on the second Tuesday also. So it's just a conflict of days.
And if we do it somewhere else?
That is a possibility.
We're talking about November, right?
We're talking December.
What does council do when there's, when there's a meeting on, on a holiday? But you don't wanna miss that meeting.
So what we've done before is either council the meeting, or we move it and have a special council meeting. So if it fell on a Tuesday and we still needed to have a meeting, but there were no other Tuesdays available, we've had some on a Thursday.
So last year we canceled our December meeting. Did you wanna try to move it up or just cancel it for December?
I think we canceled.
Do we, so these items, do we need a vote on them or can we have a consensus on them? Anybody?
The meeting? Is the meeting the meeting date? Is that what you're saying? Cancellation.
To cancel December.
Typically what I see council do when they're having, they just come to a consensus on meeting dates.
Is there anyone who wants to come and have our meeting in December on Christmas Eve? Uh, is there anyone who would like to reschedule on a different day in December?
What type of business are we looking at? How important would it be to not miss a month?
Could we wait and decide December, wait until after the November meeting?
Do you wanna see what November looks like and then decide on?
And then decide?
Well, it kind of just depends on if there's some, I mean, like, tonight, we, we really needed to do the name and the boundary. Is there gonna be something in December that we really need to do?
All right, we'll know, we'll know in November. Is it okay if we keep the November meeting so it's Tuesday and Thanksgiving's a Thursday? Y'all hold keeping on Tuesday?
I won't be here, but, and I can't join by soon, actually, we're not gonna be.
Okay.
The 24th, I mean, the 26th, I won't be here the 26th.
That's November.
Will we be in town?
Well.
I think, I, I can't commit right now. I mean, we can wait and see if we have a quorum.
So yeah, so let's keep November on the books, and if we have a quorum, we can make it, if we don't.
Should we move November to 26th?
Would y'all rather move it?
What about the, the Thursday night, the, the week before?
I'll have a show.
So we'll, so we'll have it at the theater.
I just wanna be clear, um.
Could we have it on a Wednesday?
Stay with work.
I mean, y'all, welcome to meet without.
You're considering.
I'm directing this final dress rehearsal, I kinda have to be there.
You have a good excuse, Amy.
So you want me to just respond back and see if there's availability for the 20th or the 21st?
If it's a week early?
Yes.
That's on a Wednesday.
The week before, and just Amy could come.
I'd be, I mean, I can't be there, but I'm, everybody else, as long as you have quorum, I'm cool with it.
I wouldn't be here.
You wouldn't be here on the?
The 20th.
Is the 21st still an option?
It's free.
For me?
I'm cool on the 21st. You can't do the 21st. Are y'all gonna be in town for the 21st?
Probably.
Mary Ann, you're gonna be out of town.
Well, I don't leave till the 24th.
Okay, so do you wanna, do you wanna think about the 21st?
Uh, let me look at the 21st and see if I can find a room either here or 103.
Okay. And, uh, and then we'll decide based on our meeting in, in November, what we're gonna do for December?
Yes.
Is that consensus? I see, okay. Any more discussion? All right, with that, I think that business is completed. We are journeying at 8:35 PM.